First order of business is approval of the minutes of June 28th.
June 28th, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I move in seconded. Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item D two, discussion regarding the upcoming vacancy of District One Alder Person and options for filling the position. I'm sure you've all been contacted by Alderman Tenorio. He will be resigning at the end of October. And we have some options. Kale or Rebecca, I don't know which one he wants to...
Go ahead.
Sure. Sure. All right, so the resignation has been submitted and it will be effective as of October 31st for Alder Person Tenorio. As a result, the council, the remaining nine members of the council have an option before them. Would you like to fill that seat or not? So that's the first question that the council has to make a decision on. And then the second question is, do you want to go until the end of this term? And then have the general election just play out? Or do you want to do a special election? Typically, in cases like this, what I've seen is the council will generally want to balance the interests of the district with the interests of efficiency. And by doing so, most councils will choose to fill that seat with an appointed member to fill out the remainder of the term. And rely on the next general election to fill that seat through the normal means. So if there's any questions on that process or how that would work or any discussion, happy to take that.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, of course, being my, my district, in, in all fairness, in the past probably had a different thought, you know? But at this time, really, I feel that, you know, to fill a vacancy and appoint that, I mean, we did with Mari, which was great, you know, years back.
Well, that's a cautionary tale.
I know, I mean, I'm just... But at this time, really, I feel strong. That's my opinion, my feeling, that we should keep the, the seat vacant until the regular election 2004. That's my opinion.
Mr. Chair.
Twenty-four, I mean, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, I'd like, I'd like to follow up with Vince. Vince, why? You said, you said your opinion, you should, we should keep it vacant. Why should we keep it vacant?
Well, we should keep vacant based on the fact, before, I mean, I, I did experience certain things and I feel now different, you know? I mean, to me, I think the job should be, should be elected, not appointed. So, I mean, I know it'd be just one, the city's going to be vacant, you know, until, then again, my feeling or my opinion, until 2024. But that's how I feel. So that's, that's up to the council, you know?
Thank you.
Um, you know, I believe that there's enough time right now that if the council so choose, they could have an election in spring of 2023, correct?
Legally, yes.
Okay. Legally, yes.
Yeah, there's a, there's a deadline. I believe February 1 is the hard deadline for having everything all in line. There should be enough publication requirements to get before the primary, which would be likely February 20th or whatever, the third Tuesdays. So technically, it's, it's possible.
Or, or is there one in April?
Yeah, so, if February 1 is the cutoff for the April.
Yeah, for the April election, okay. Um, Vince, from my opinion, I disagree with you. Historically, we've always acted expeditiously to get someone on the council in fairness to the people of the district. Not only have we appointed Alderman Michael in the past, we've appointed former Alderman Oik Nayer.
Kurt Copeland before me?
Kurt Copeland. Um, so there's been, this, it's happened over the years a number of times. And I think that in fairness to the people in the first district, they deserve representation on, on the committees that, that Angelito is on. And so, you know, I just think that we should proceed with going through the process of appointing someone to fill the term. Or alternatively, having an election. And, and I just don't see somebody spending a lot of money for elect, getting elected in a one-year term. I think it's, I know, I know you did, I know that. Um, I, I don't think it's fair for someone to be put in that position. I think I'd, I'd rather see someone appointed to fill out the term and, and get a year and a half or a year's experience. Uh, because I quite frankly think there's going to be some other vacancies on the council after the next election. I don't anticipate running again. I don't know if Alderman Vitali anticipates running again. But I think there's several of us that are probably not going to be on the council. And I think it'd be good to have someone get some experience on the council so that the rest of you aren't stuck with all newbies.
Mr. Chair. I agree. I think that someone should be appointed until the next council, um, uh, election. And I would just request that the person who came in second be reached out to. Because I feel that the people somewhat have spoken, that they might have been in support of him. Whether that individual is still interested or not is one thing. But I just believe that the person who came in behind Vince, yeah, third, really, yeah, should be reached out to. Because if Angelito wouldn't have run, that person very well could have taken it. We don't know. It's speculations. But I would just think that it would be the right thing to do.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I also agree with you as far as filling the vacancy. And I'm very vocal on Facebook, very present. And oftentimes, I get calls actually from District One. Where people say they're trying to get a hold of their Alder Person in District One. And to no avail, get, don't get a phone call back. And that's with representation right now. So I think it really would serve the constituents properly to fill that vacancy. Whether it be appointed or election, I, I think the appointment would make more sense.
Anyone else have any comments on that?
Yeah, I have a comment, an Alder Person Christian. How, how, what, what?
Excuse me.
Yes.
Alderman Stefanski.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I have another question. If we did an election in spring, because it's a school board election, would it cost us any additional money to do it?
Possibly. Because we might have to have a primary.
I got you.
Oh, yeah, if enough people applied, if more than, if more than two.
I doubt that, but you never know.
If three people applied, there'd be a primary? Do I understand that correctly? If more than two, so three, three or more would apply, there'd be a primary.
Alderman Vitali?
Yeah, my question is, an Alder Person Christian. You know, myself, really, I never got many calls from the outside my district. But the fact of it is that I could attest that, that every emails and phone call that I received with myself.
It was directed at you.
I mean, uh...
It absolutely wasn't directed at you. I know that you return your calls.
Oh, okay.
Speaking of people who have reached out to me, because I'm, I'm present on Facebook often. And because of that, I think people just interact that way socially and otherwise.
Sure, that's, that's fine.
So when they ask questions, they want to know who their Alder is, things like that.
Yes.
Sometimes they come that route.
Sure, that's fine.
And of course, I would bring them right back to your district or any respective Alder. Um, so I'm not Aldering at large, but what I hear feedback, yeah, at that is when Angelito was trying to be contacted, either the voicemail was falling or he's...
I'm not that bad representative. That's what I thought, you know? That's what I thought. I said, I'm not that bad.
Comments?
I, I agree with you, Tom. I'm going to point till 24.
Yeah, I'll point till 24. I think it's, I would just add that it's unfair.
I'll go along with that too. That's fine.
Yeah, yeah. There's two ways of looking at it, as you have, as our city attorney has indicated. If you recall, several years ago, when Alderman Singstock retired.
Singstock.
Singstock. And I bring up Alderman Singstock because he has been with District Five many, many, many years. At that time, the mayor spoke with me regarding this situation to get my feedback. And I said, I thought perhaps I could handle it. With his help, we handled it. It, it took a while. It was abrupt that he resigned. It took everyone by surprise. But we saved the city money. We saved the city money and actually the obligations were fulfilled. Even though he was council president at that time, we filled the position basically at the next election, the April election. When we had several candidates come out.
I won by eight votes.
I want to ask you a question.
I'm not through talking. I'm not through talking, Tom.
I, I'm sorry, I want to ask a question about, about what you're saying. If it's more than two years, does that make a difference with state law as far as if it has to be an election or an appointment? Because this was less than halfway through the term.
Uh, no. In theory, someone could resign the first month of their candidacy and you could either choose to fill it for the remainder of the term or leave it vacant.
Okay.
If you recall, Alderman Singstock only had a year to go, the same, the same.
It was two years.
It was two years. It was over two years.
It was two years?
Right.
Okay. I stand corrected.
That's why I asked the question.
All right. Thank you. But as I indicated, it, it can be done, uh, can be done. And I think Alderman Vitali can handle it. I really do. He's always been very responsive to his constituents and he's always done a nice job. Um, and again, with the mayor's help, and he was very instrumental in helping when I needed help. But we did it and it turned out okay. So you might consider it because we had done it before. If you recall, the second district also just happened. We interviewed, we interviewed, I think, at least seven candidates. It was, um, it was lengthy, cumbersome, uh, and it was, um, difficult to choose these candidates. They were all very good. But it was filled, it was filled at that time and it, it worked out as well. So there's, there's just decisions to be made here. But I, I do think that Alderman Vitali can handle it.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Michael. I move that we go with appointing somebody to fill out Tenorio's, Alder Person Tenorio's current term until the regular Aldermanic election in 20, spring of 2024.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Kale had something he wanted to say.
So this is a discussion item.
So it's not a...
And so you don't really necessarily need to have a motion out today, but what the council would have to do is someone to reach out to myself or Rebecca and ask to put something on the agenda.
And we're trying to get a consensus.
Yeah, sure, sure. I don't know if it was a formal motion or not, but it's...
Yeah, it's, it's a consensus.
To get something on the floor so we can get a vote on it. There's no further discussion. Polls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. No.
No.
Okay, seven to two. The ayes have it. So, um, I would ask that staff prepare, um, a request for applications for, for the office like we've done in the past. And take it from there. Uh, next item on the agenda is discussion regarding the common council standing committee structure, responsibilities, and membership.
I'm almost there.
Do you want to, will not the next one?
Um, if you want to do the calendar, Kale can probably start talking about it and then I'll...
Okay, we'll go to item four, discussion relating to the scheduling of council meetings and the 2023 calendar.
Mr. Chair. Uh, so this is coming for the council because every year the council sets its calendar for the subsequent year. So for 2023, we're in that process of figuring out when meetings are going to be. Um, there are, of course, holidays and things to dodge and the general way we've done in the past. However, in this time, um, we'd like to present the council with our option. And that is taking the total number of meetings that the council has and reducing those. I've drafted an option in which there were 13 scheduled meetings in 2023. However, the council has essentially a blank slate to work on. There's only one requirement that the council meets. The state law says the council meets once a month. However, it allows you to meet more frequently and in the past, West Alice has done that. But, uh, over the last couple of years, COVID pushed a lot of things on the table to be looked at closer. And now we have done this thing called a consent agenda, which has really resulted in efficiencies for the council. On top of that, um, there is this idea that with every council meeting, all the department heads work a lot with staff to prepare for each council meeting. And so in the efforts of being more efficient on a staff time basis, the fewer council meetings there are, actually, the more efficient we are as staff. Because we then can focus our prep time only for each meeting as opposed to, it's only 13 times as opposed to 22 times. And then another thing is, um, for, what this would do is concentrate items on agendas, including public hearings. However, in researching public hearings, there really isn't a requirement to do these thorough, robust public hearings that we have done in the past. What it really is is a chance for the public to come and speak on an item. So on certain topics where there is no public that cares to speak on a topic, those hearings can be truncated to a single slide on a page and just answer questions that the council might have. So with all those things combined, I just wanted to make sure that the council had this option available and to hear what you were thinking. Um, by reducing the number of meetings to, I would estimate, no, no, it can't be fewer than 12, but it could be anywhere around that number. Um, and essentially focusing on getting things on the consent agenda, shortening the public hearings. Uh, and if necessary, holding, uh, more separate committee meetings to handle the work outside of the council night.
Um, Attorney Becker, I know Rebecca has an alternate, uh, calendar as well, which is...
I swear I logged in at 4:30.
That is 18 meetings, similar to the ones we have now. Um, I think it, it eliminates the one meeting in February and April that are, you know, conflicting with the elections to make it easier for staff there. And it eliminates, you know, a meeting in December and, but it keeps basically two meetings a month. The reason we have recess meetings, and those of you who have been here as long as some of us, is that we were trying to help businesses and, and citizens get their permits and licenses in an expedited fashion. So rather, what used to happen is it would be introduced to the council tonight. There would be no recess meetings. It would refer to a committee meeting later in the month. It would, that committee would meet and report it back to the council at the next meeting. Now we can have it introduced tonight, act on it tonight, and it's done in one shot. I think we're doing our businesses and citizens a disservice if we lengthen the time that we have between meetings. Businesses maybe can't open as fast as they want to open. And quite frankly, there's been many times, um, over the years, and, and I know even with the newer members of the council, where we've had emergency, emergency items come up that we want to act on in one night and, and do it quickly. And really don't want to wait two weeks or four weeks or six weeks for the next meeting. So I, I prefer, I prefer not having 18 meetings either. I'd rather have 13. But I think in service of the citizens, I think we should stick with, um, the proposal that I seen from Rebecca that is 18 meetings and, and do it in that fashion.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Michael.
I guess it comes down to how we look at our calendars. I think in the past, a lot of us maybe use day timers, paper calendars, or even you just knew, first and third Tuesday, I got a council meeting. Uh, I think, I guess, most of us have moved to Outlook Calendar or whether you Google or whatever you're going to use, you know, an electronic calendar that's with you everywhere, all the time. Are we're still talking about the same day of the week essentially? I mean, I like, you know, because...
Tuesdays, right? Rebecca, I think almost all these are Tuesday.
Yeah, the majority of those, they are.
I'm looking on here. I don't see any that aren't on the Tuesday. Just that you skip some Tuesdays and, and I, I think in, in a couple of months, it might be on the second Tuesday rather than the first and third.
Well, that's where we have like CDA though. No, that's Wednesday.
Well, you have it on, you have it on Tuesday.
That's Tuesday.
But you can move the CDA in too.
Got to talk to the city administrator about that.
So, I mean, that's, it's up, it's up to you people, uh, how you think we should operate.
I like your idea, Tom.
I like 18 also.
Yeah, I think, I think, not as big a jump.
Yeah, yeah. And, and it, it still gives us an opportunity to still have that interaction with our department heads, to still be available to constituents. I think that's valuable.
Mr. Chair, the only, the only difference I've noticed with the license and health, uh, committee meeting. Sometime if we have a, a schedule, which means a schedule of, say, 15 applicants, you know? And sometimes there's some discussions incur with that. So sometime I feel we should have a special meeting for, for, for the specific issue, you know? I mean, not just hold everybody hostage for an hour, you know, I mean, uh, until we go back to special. I mean, I mean, that's my, I call them hostages, you know? My rest of my council, Colly, I'm going to, I don't know, you guys wait for the license and health. So I don't know if it's...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I agree with you on that. You know, it's a big agenda. I do feel that they should be, um, there should be some earlier meetings to start, like you said, instead of people waiting. So this would be the potential...
We got it up now.
Yeah.
So why would you have November 7th and 14th?
So we have to have a, um, a public hearing for the budget and then we have to adopt it. If you have it on the 21st, it's too close. It's hard for the treasurer's office to get everything.
If you have changes and items like that.
There could be a very short meeting.
All right, the blue dates are...
The council dates.
On the corner, the yellow.
The yellow are holidays.
Holidays, okay.
And the gray is elections.
Um, right. And then the grayed out is State Fair and then have the, um, State Districts.
So some months we'll only have one meeting, it looks like.
Yes.
Are we going to have a problem on November 7th? Isn't that Election Day as well?
Not next year.
It's not?
No, not next year. This year we have...
We don't have anything to fall next year?
No.
Okay. Second Tuesday.
Not an odd years.
Yeah, I like that.
I do too.
Move approval.
I get them.
What's the, what's our timeframe on adopting this if we want to kind of digest it a little bit?
Will it be before the committee next, or the council next time? So you can...
Propose this one and we can amend it in committee or something. Yeah.
Yeah. It's just that it's helpful for us to get started.
Right.
Will you print it out for us, please?
I'll send it to you. If you need to print it, I will.
Okay, um, next we'll go back to item three, discussion regarding common council standing committee structure, responsibilities, and membership. Rebecca.
Sure, I've been working with Kale the last few days. I was contacted by a few people about taking the opportunity since Alderman Tenorio is, um, leaving to look at maybe the structures of the committees and things like that. And we haven't really adjusted anything for quite some times. And we've made changes to responsibilities for departments and switched up some things. So it was just a good opportunity to look at things and maybe streamline, make them more efficient for the departments, for our constituents, and for the, the council. So, um, came up with, um, the option for having four, um, standing committees instead of the five that we currently do. And I'm just going to go through and show you the slides of what we were thinking. It's a starting point, obviously, for discussion. So I'll, I'll show you the four. So the administration committee, similar to the administration and finance committee, dealing with the budgeting, things like that. And then it's, also deals with, um, everything relating to those departments. The assessor, treasurer, communications, HR, finance department, and the library. And then those boards, committees, and commissions. So similar to what it is at this point, except I think removing the police and fire department from there. The second one is the public works committee, similar to what it is. I know last time we talked, or last month, we talked about moving the traffic to the public works. That would include that. But basically, anything that has to do with engineering department and public works would go to the public works committee. So not that big of a change. Uh, the third one is the economic development committee. This is where it's somewhat different. Um, this has to do with, uh, people wanting to open businesses and things within the city. So a lot with, uh, economic development and planning and zoning. Um, also with people wanting to open different types of businesses in the city. If they need a license related to the economic development, um, that would go to this committee. And then public safety committee. So this would be, um, all the other licenses that aren't related, um, to developments that, like the city clerk's office doesn't do. That would involve the police and fire departments, um, code enforcement, the health department, um, and then all those boards, committees, and commissions. Just a little realignment of the way things are structured. And if there's any, um, anything related to legislation for a specific department or subject, it would go to that, the corresponding committee. Same with appointments, boards, committees, and commissions. It would go to the specific, um, committee. Department head appointment would go to the specific committee. So I will, this is just a starting point. So that's just a real quick overview.
Where would, uh, Mr. Chair, where would the, like, um, liquor licenses and bartender application economic? Because it's issued by the city clerk? No, go ahead.
The business licenses would go to the economic development because they have to do with the development. But an operator license, a bartender license, that would go to public safety because it has to do with public safety and the service of alcohol.
Where would the appointees go?
It depends on what they're being appointed for. If it was, say, if it was the historical commission, it would go to the public safety. Um, if it was the police and fire commission, or if it's the CDVG grant committee, then it would go to the economic development committee.
But we have many committees on there. No, let's sit on there.
Well, I don't know if we have each and every single one of them, but we would divvy them up according to the topic that... Most of us as departments have committees we liaison with. So if we didn't have that listed, it would go to the committee that the department liaised on with. So, but we can make sure that we list everything if we need to.
And that would be reappointment of all of us, right? Would, would, are we looking at, have this take effects?
Yeah.
Like with the fact that Angelito's leaving, we're changing things up?
The mayor would have the opportunity to assign each member of the council to new committees. Because we'd eliminate some committees.
Yeah.
New chairs, new committees, everything.
Mr. Chair. And so the idea is to have these four committees, maybe the similar idea of having each member serve on two committees, um, in the same way as there is right now. Uh, and then the other, like, a good example is the purchasing and conveying of city property. One could argue that's an economic development concept, but you could also argue it's a public works concept because it's city property when it's owned. So those are the kinds of things that the council has to decide if this is an interesting idea to the council, where you'd want those things to end up. We've put them in categories of starting point and we'll just take any feedback you have between now and whenever the council would want to present this, if there's any members who wish to do so.
Mr. Chair. So currently, five districts, two elders per district, five committees. Would we have, some people be on, would some committees have two aldermen on it?
The only thing that would be different is everyone wouldn't be a committee chair or vice chair.
Oh, there's only four chair, there's only four chairs and four vice chairs. That's the only difference. Okay. And to your point you just made, we do joint referrals all the time, you know, so we'd still have some occasional joint referrals. And so if I understand the staff that's liaison, liaising with each committee, you wouldn't, so if we did, we were having concurrent committees, would, would, say, the clerk's office only be liaising with one, one of the, half of the committees? No, right?
We'd have to work it out as staff, but like Richard helps me out and he goes to initiatives and finance all the time, so.
Mr. Chair, in this version, there are a couple of departments, like city administration, city attorney, that aren't assigned to a specific committee because we bounce around a lot. Um, but principally, this would be the committee that would take all those. Administration committee would likely be the one that those departments would liaise with for appointments and things like that.
And Mr. Chair.
Alderman Michael.
I guess I'm not familiar enough with what our, I ask this question all the time. What do our neighbors do, you know? Do we have, do most people do four committees, five committees? You know, do we have, do most people do four committees, five committees? Some cities might have 12 committees, I bet, you know, it might just be a, depending on whether they'll, they have 10 alders or 25 alders.
Yeah, four or five, I was looking around, because I wanted to see some different models, and it seemed like a lot of them have four.
Our size.
Yeah, the larger cities obviously have.
And, and I'm just going to make the point, in my 20-something years on the council, that jobs really evolved a lot, and it's a lot to do with the technology of it, and it's, it's become less of a resident and citizen support and more of a, more of a policy thing. So, and, and clearly, the ways to communicate have certainly streamlined, you know, we don't have to write, often, we don't have to write actual physical letters, you know, so I, I think the current structure we've had, and we've had it my, for my tenure on the council, and I'm really glad that we're looking at things, the world's changed, you know, and let's look at how we can streamline things and make things more efficient. So I'm, I'm really glad we're looking at this, and I guess I haven't made up my mind on it yet, but, because it's our first time really seeing it, my first time at least, so.
Paul Newey, I agree with you, it's been this way since I've been on the council and before my time.
Where was the, where's the barn cleaning out guy?
He was the administration.
Stable master.
He was administering a fork to the pay pile?
Where's the budget?
And I agree with you, it's, it's time to modernize the committees, I think. And I think what we've seen, at least at our council recesses, is some committees are overloaded with, with items that are time intensive, and, and I think this splits some of that up a little bit, so we can have a more balanced recess meetings, but maybe there's got to be some tweaking. I would be in favor of going to a four committee structure, whether it's, you know, exactly the way that is or not, you know, but I'm open to that.
Are we going to ask about our, I see a lot of our department heads here and our mayor, are we looking for input from them yet, or are we just expecting phone calls and emails later?
Well, I'd welcome input from anybody.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just glad the slides are up.
So are we.
And, and Mr. Chair, again, would the timeframe, what would the timeframe on something like this, it could happen, it could, this could probably really happen anytime, or are we thinking before, when we're back to 10?
So, so all this would require currently is, the only thing that establishes this is the city's internal policies and procedures. That's a resolution that can be adopted by the council at any point in time, and it's effective at that time.
Oh.
So it would be immediate change.
Sounds good to me.
I like it.
I can share this with you, and then if there's comments or adjustments that you want.
Well, is, is the feeling that we want to proceed with something like this?
Yes.
Okay.
But we're going to do it after we're at full strength, right?
Well, we don't have to.
Beginning of the year, right?
Yeah, we could, we can make it effective January 1st.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
And then when the new council member comes on, they'll fall into whatever, whatever committees, you know, are open.
Left.
Yeah, well, whatever one's.
Stable master, they get.
So, moving forward, all we would need then is another person to step forward and, propose a draft, and we could have that ready for the next council meeting. I also would agree, it's a good idea to make it effective on a future date, to allow the mayor to decide what appointments to make, and that way, there's a nice, clean transition with no gap.
I'll work with you and propose it.
Mr. Chair, one more thing. Would we want to perhaps wait until we have Alderman Tenorio? Yes, to see what our new 10th alder's strengths are going to be. So I'm, I'm just putting that out there, I'm not saying that we need to delay it necessarily. And the timing on the new alder, when would we expect them, if, if we're appointing? When, when would that, I mean, there's a period where we announce the vacancy, and then there's a period where people have a time to apply, and then there's the vetting, and then the interviews and all that. So I'm just wondering if the.
You might want to say January 1st is your start date.
I don't see why we can't have it done by the end of the year.
I don't know.
That's, that might be a little bit aggressive, but I agree.
With the holidays and all that?
We should be on a fast pace and try to get it done as soon as possible.
We can do it later, and we're already working with communications to update what we had last time, so as far as the brochure and getting things.
So what would you figure, three weeks of notification for people, or four weeks?
We could leave it open for a month, and then shortly after the budget, we start doing the interviews.
Okay, yeah.
And then when's our last meeting in December?
The 12th, I think.
Then we could make the decision by the 12th, right?
13th, perfect.
We could make the decision by then, right?
Should be able to make it by then, they could take effect the first of the year.
Yeah, that makes sense, where, like, our 10th alder, we'd like to know what their strengths in.
Yeah, before we go on assignment.
Yeah.
And then mayor tonight, divide them up.
Yep.
Yeah.
For the first of the year, I think we do that.
Perfect.
There goes your December Christmas vacation. I'm looking at.
Florida's white belt, anyway.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Rebecca, where's health in here? It's in republic safety. Okay. All right. So license and health is kind of morphed into public safety, but only focused on the safety type licenses and things like that. Okay. So we can share this, and Cale already did draft something related to this, so we can share that.
Okay, anything else on this subject? If not, we're going to move on to item five, deliberating the repair replacement of public works facility.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask if the committee would consider going to closed session for this item and the next item?
Okay. And for items five and six, which is discussion regarding fire prevention, excuse me, for agenda items five and six, the committee and the whole will convene in closed session pursuant to provisions of Wisconsin statute section 19.85, parent one, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties or investing of public funds, committee and the whole may reconvene in open session after completion of the closed session to consider the agenda.
I hope you can go in the closed session.
Second.
Alderman Stefanski.
Aye.
Alderman Disham.
Aye.
Alderman Keane.
Aye.
Alderman Ranky.
Aye.